Well, it looks like we're ready to begin. We'll call the meeting to orders. This is May 12, 2014, 9:00 a.m., and we'll go to the county commissioners' court to court. We'll first have a prayer and Julie will do the prayer, then we'll do the last text.
Heavenly Father, I want to be on thank you for the opportunity to gather together as a county lord. And we just ask that you be with the commissioners today as they make important decisions for the county and for the taxpayers and the county lord. And we ask that you be with each department head and elected official and all the county employees, Lord, and that we may do the job to your will. We thank you for being with the fire counters yesterday during the fires. And we ask that you be with those people and comfort those who have lost their homes, Lord, and help us together as a community to come together and help them. Just be with us and guide us throughout this week, each and every day, Lord. It's incredible.
The religion is still alive, the country is safe in America, and the sacred law is for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one entity indivisible.
And there will be approval of the amendments from the April 28, 2014, county commissioners' court meeting, and I'll have a tan motion to approve.
I want suggested change on item 12, the employment items. The motion is referencing A, B, and C, and then it lists the additional employment items. We can just have the minutes reflect the first three, A, B, and C, because it was the motion, the second, the vote, and then I think we took them in a separate order. D and E were added. Just didn't know if we should note, and maybe that is implied with the way it follows.
It is, yeah, she has it numbered, because we took a motion on those first three and then the next two, the motion, motion and second, the vote were taken.
Okay, yeah, okay. I make the motion that we accept the amendment as presented.
Second. Motion approved, second, all in favor. That's a five zero. Item number two, vouchers to consider an act upon the approval of repayment of vouchers processed by the county attorney's office for the period of April 23, 2014 through May 6, 2014. Those items, checks numbered 1-5, 5-3, 1-4 through 1-5, 5-5, 7-2, NY transfers, 3-7-3 through 3-7-7, the total amount of $2,023,022 in the left sentence. Motion approved, second.
A second. That's good.
Ready discussion?
I have one question for the court. Page 18 of 35, check number 1-5-5-5-8. The vendor is written to the muse of 1,100. Repair and add clear edging and then the line that's off. I'm just not sure what that is.
That's two, 10 chairs that were repaired and then between the district courts, they had torn because of the railing. And so we went in and added this hard plastic around the edges so they couldn't tear it off. So that's for 10 chairs altogether, so it's a little over.
Okay, thank you.
The only one I have is on page 22. The differences in the prices for an MGM or MCM Grand Hotel, just a bunch of different prices on there. What's going on here? What's the deal?
Because the procurement cards are limited to $500 a day, I think they each went down and paid a little bit every day. The room rate was the same for the entire estate, it's just they charged a little every day to stay.
Okay, well, it's just kind of odd to see all those prices on there.
And you will see on cost per one, they did overcharge him.
Yeah, I saw that was corrected.
So, so again, daily paying the allocated room rate versus at the end of the conference?
Because their card has the optical per transaction order that could be followed.
Remember that hotel? I know. That's the one I stayed in here. They got three of them. Do we have any other questions? I have a motion approved and a second, all in favor. That's a five zero. Item number three, insurance report. Do you have any additional on that?
No.
So recognized. Item four, salary survey to hear on today on the salary survey offered by the Texas Association of Counties.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
The last insurance report, I was asked to go to Texas Association of Counties and bring back some information as to the type of assistance that they might be able to provide counties regarding salary surveys, audits of positions, salary structure, that sort of thing. I did contact Michelle Arsenal with Texas Association of Counties. That does not provide any type of assistance to counties along those lines at all anymore. In years past, they had contracted with Waters Group and provided information to conduct a salary survey, but that also has been stopped some years ago. They just don't participate in any kind of salary survey or any assistance in salary restructuring for counties at all. They don't get involved in that arena. Now, Michelle indicated to me that while she was with Wichita County, they self-audited positions. And she talked with me very briefly about that process. She did offer very kindly, dispensive time at her next visit in July here to talk about what that process looked like. They used a point factor method to do that. She said it was a tedious process, took quite a lot of time, but they were very successful with it. And because they self-audited those positions, it kept the cost down for them. And they also instituted a policy to support that endeavor. And throughout her tenure as HR director there, they maintained that policy and adhered to the salary structure that was put in place. Michelle indicated, also she referred me to Bob Grinoli, who is a recently retired HR director for Kamau County. I did talk to Bob. He said that Kamau County had gone through this process twice, once in 2002, and then again about four years later, with the first being with Ray and Associates, and then the second with another organization with the same results. They had some positions that were topped out or deemed at the top of their structure or beyond, and so those positions were frozen, and they brought the other positions in line. They also had a very structured group and step-type salary structure that was adhered to throughout the county. Bob currently, in his retirement, works with a consulting group that's called Worling Associates. And Dr. Steve Worling heads that up. I did talk with Dr. Worling as well. He and Bob both indicated that in our situation, job descriptions should be the first order of business to review and audit those job descriptions. And then from, once we get the job descriptions nailed down, then we could begin to look at salaries in our salary placement and where our positions fall within that. We can either do that utilizing a third party, or we can do that internally. Either way, it's going to take some time to process that for our folks and for a third party if we chose to go that route. Also, I put a request out on the list, sir, to ask across the state, what have other counties done? I got just a handful of those responses. You see them listed there. Everyone that responded utilized a third party to go through this process, and the costs range from $30,000 to $200,000 to implement and utilize a third party to implement a salary structure. Levitt County is currently in the process of getting some soft quotes out from Waters Group and the Hay Group, Buckler offices in Dallas. Those numbers should be back this week or next, and Greg George with Levitt County has graciously offered to share those figures with us when he receives them. When I put the request out on the list, sir, I got a lot of responses from across the state. Please share that information with me when you get it. There appears to be a lot of interest across the state in this process. Michelle indicated that what she has seen much of the time, you know, either way works well, and that she's seen counties spend a lot of money implementing through or contracting with a third party and then choosing not to fully implement recommendations.
I think, first of all, I thank you for your thorough review process. That helps a lot. Taking home that note from Michelle, we take that, I think, to start off is that the counties did a, I guess, a thorough revision of job descriptions. Now, was that job description primarily driven by the county itself or was that a third party? Was the, all the department heads got together and then basically came up with a job description of those positions and a link to those departments, and it just kind of joined, spread it out county-wide or?
At Wichita County, it was done internally. Some of the other counties that utilized a third party, it was done by the third party. As I visited with Dr. Worling, we would have the option, if we chose to go with the third party, we would likely have the option to internally provide a part of the service in order to keep costs down. The job descriptions might likely mean one portion of that that we would manage internally. Regardless of whether you utilize a third party to contract that or not, it would still take us within the county, the department head, elected officials in the HR department internally to drive that job description audit, because no one from the outside, or even outside the departments, are going to be able to audit the positions within each department. That's going to have to come from within that department.
So are there lessons to be taken from these particular counties that we conversed with them, what they learned, what they learned out of that third party investigation, and maybe utilize some of those things that they learned and put into action rather than actually going through a third party?
Absolutely. I think there are always lessons to be learned. I think the information that I gathered, at least in the brief conversation that I've had through this process, was one of the greatest pitfalls, is to embark on a study, either spend time on the study internally, doing it internally, or contacting with a third party, and then either not implementing the changes or not adhering to the recommended structures once they're put in place. I think that's the greatest.
Well, I have two uncertainties.
Just one final as far as I have a senior moment to begin that in July, I think it would be noteworthy to pull Michelle in and visit with her during the time that she's here, just to see what we might be able to learn from that. And then maybe rally up the, I know that the last time the visibility was issued, all the department served were going to be a part of it as well they should be, and try to get some, maybe, a, an high-type of discussion committed together to start generating some things that we're looking for and developing some criteria as far as the job descriptions and each one of those, as we can start as preliminary to that business.
And I will add, in terms of perspective for the court and the controls of our existing practices, I'm looking at just two positions, just in general terms, one being a secretary position, and over the last years, four years, this position has moved up $10,000. It started at $30,000 and is now up to $39,000. Part of that is with incremental changes that come to the court. Another position in the same time span has increased $13,000. So this is happening often in very small increments.
Now, are you speaking across the board, Commissioner, as a secretary per se across the board or not specifically?
I'm looking at two particular positions that were increased, and I'll be happy to make a copy. Carrie provided this information to me. I'll be happy to make a copy and share this to the court, but for me, it adds perspective in terms of what we're doing today. There's definitely a need to peel back those layers, if you will, because those increases, I think, are very difficult to sustain across the board. And the court, often we give them in small increments. We don't see a $10,000 increase. We don't see a $13,000 increase, but this is happening. And they're very real numbers, and I'll be happy to share that and make that part of the record for today.
My question, and maybe you've answered it. What is the purpose? What is our purpose for asking you to do this?
As I understand it, the purpose for reviewing this information and looking towards an audit of positions would be to bring our current, our existing salary structure into an organized set, and then place salaries within that structure according to the actual worth of those positions. And hopefully, at that point, establish a process, procedure, policy to maintain that structure down the road as we move forward.
Does it mean some positions are being paid and some positions are being underpaid?
Because there's no structure.
Do our employees have a problem?
Some have posed some issues of concern, and they have discussed in doing budgetary process.
Inequities is more, I think, where the voice is coming from, inequities of pay scales and positions, and certainly on the high end of that. I may have a different perspective of whether I'm on the low end of that.
It seems to me at budget time, you're always going to have those discrepancies that are going to pop up, and, you know, a structure that you're talking about, I think is going to be hard to define.
It would be difficult.
And to go out and even consider a third party in doing this for us, I think is ludicrous. I think we need to do that. Certainly, to be able to do something like that would be.
I'm just curious as to, like, if I have, like, the positions you're talking about, I don't know what office they come from, but just say that through this salary survey that we find out that, excuse me, just say one of the ladies in our office does the same job, that maybe that salary line is funded as much. So through that salary survey process, is that, is that going to make y'all be bound to raise that position to that particular amount? I don't know if I'm saying it correctly.
I don't necessarily think that that ties us into doing that. I think that's sort of the discretion between the departments and what they have in regards to that budget of what may be coming in. Those things, I think, need to be discussed, though, and I think you need to have some debity there, not just be a rubber bar arbitrarily just across the board. And if that makes sense, I think it has to be department-owned discussion as far as what you may have made be different than another department from some concerns in regards to that.
Okay, yeah, because currently, we just work, you know, obviously, we're only able to work with within our budget, what's, you know, what's allowed during that time. So I was just kind of curious. I've never really been through one of those. Just questions.
The first layer of a salary audit, if you will, would be to just, just to identify those positions that potentially fall below or fall above, or where that inequity is internally. Just to define it and be aware and know it's there, and then it would be, of course, to what the budget would permit and what this court sees fit to be adjustments that you make.
Yeah, and I certainly see that as a great preliminary step. And to Commissioner Church's question is the inequities that either exist or don't exist. So the information being available for the court to review that from a global perspective or department perspective, because it could be, you know, there is not, everything appears in line in this department versus this department. What is it that is making that difference? I think mine, we have a couple others that would like to.
Just to kind of shed a bit of light to you, we went through this salary survey two times. The departments right now, except for one, the lens is on one that I know in the county that probably hasn't done this. We've already established the job descriptions. We created all of that. That was part of the HR department before you came on. So a lot of that information is already there. I know my department has it, so it might be just as easy as to gather that information once you choose to move forward, you know, in order to look at the salaries. We've already done a lot of that work.
Is that about 10 to 12 years ago, Mike, that was done? The last note I have.
The last one. As far as the job description, some of them needs to be changed because people have changed, but I think.
There's a starting point.
Yeah.
Months and months. This did not happen over just two or three months. It took.
This is internal, no way that we didn't use a third party.
We did it internal to establish the job descriptions, and then we went out of house for them to help us evaluate the comparison of this county versus this county to make it fair.
And I think Michelle can probably help us in that line. And what you have initially already done, spoken to a number of other county HRs, and that has helped out quite a bit as well. I agree with Commissioner Church, they don't need to be driving issues towards outside consulting or contracting, when we can do a lot of things in-house, and it sounds to be like we've already done that.
Leanne, you have some comment?
I do. I have a question. Just like Mike, I know we've done this in the past, and then we got everybody on the scale, and then through the years, department heads can make decisions to not increase this person's pay and give that increase to someone else, or, you know, diversify the funds that way in their salaries. So even if you do this again, what's going to stop over a period of time this not happening? Because can you, Dave, this is a question that I have. Can you tell an elected official that they can't disperse those funds as they choose?
Yes, the commissioners can, but I do think you're making a very good point. One of the reasons this creep happens is because of the way salaries have been increased and have been done in the past. And instead of, like, many times, instead of giving, when the increase has been given, instead of giving across the board, you give a discretion to department heads. So department heads have gone and scattered this money out, sometimes a lot to this employee and little to this one, and that's where your discrepancies come in, in my opinion. Now, commissioners have the right to do that. But that, a lot of this discrepancy is caused by the way the salary increases in the budget process.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, that has happened primarily through the budgetary process as far as the incremental increase of coal or dipping up. Has that happened extensively beyond that?
Yes.
Yes.
And if the department has an empty position and they want, or someone paid less than salary, sometimes they take those funds and move to an existing position. The example of the commissioner.
And that's where the huge percentage increases start to occur. So I think it's a valid question, and certainly, once, if it is a task force or a committee that starts to look into that, and I think we are certainly jumping the gun in terms of how to establish that and answer those questions. I think that's the intent of this discussion. It's really to identify if there are inequities and what is a global perspective of that. And to Commissioner Church's question, there have been employees that have always concerned about the inequities in particular. So from my perspective, you know, I would like to see us at least look at that and know how many inequities we have or how significant of a problem it is. And maybe the answer is it is not, but at least we know that information.
Where do we end with this? Well, yeah, I have thought about this a whole lot personally, because my mind is that we always say, let's be fair. Well, what does that mean? How do we be fair? And do we want to encourage people to do a good job? We need to have some flexibility to have the reward, or it needs to be rewarded, that sort of thing. Anyway, I can, I have no problem looking at it. I, I. Your honor.
Well, I just want to make a comment on, you know, like, my department. If you got three truck drivers, let's say you got three truck drivers. You got one, if you pay them all the same, you got one that's not as good as this truck driver over here, but yet he's not a good truck driver, but he'd get paid as much as a real good one.
The goal or the objective of salary structure is not necessarily to pay every like position identically. The goal is to have a range that those positions fall within, and then within that range, there you have the opportunity to pay top performers more than non-performers. But the goal is to stay within the range for that position. The inequity occurs when you have positions that are paid above or below the ranges for those positions.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I think that's what the focus that we are, we were looking at.
I think whenever you have a percentage raise, for example, my department and probably Julie's being clerks are considered one of the lowest, and 3% of $25,000 is not very much considered 3% of $40,000, which may be a secretary in another office. So I think that you ought to look at the inequities of that.
I would argue, Ricky, it goes back to the job descriptions and the range that reflects that particular job description. Am I saying that correctly?
Exactly, yes. That each position, whether it's titled a clerk or whether it be titled a court administrator or anything else, would need to be reviewed according to what the duties are for that position, and then the range established for that set of duties, and then strive to maintain those positions within the ranges in which they fall.
Would it not help if you had a, maybe a possibility, like, step increases where, you know, each three years, each four years, whatever it might be, that an individual that is doing their job that we're supposed to be doing would reach a level and reach that next step?
And move in steps. That's absolutely one way to do it. You can set it up in a graded step where there are nine, 10, 11 steps within a salary structure to allow a person to move through those steps, or you can do a minimum midpoint maximum.
The thing about steps is that you know, well, the next level, what it's going to be, what it's going to cost, and you don't have to go through the stuff about, well, this employee did a better job than this employee. At least with a step program, you can, you can monitor it. We can do it as, in our budgets as we, as the budget comes around, and just a lot easier to be, to be able to process it and where we're at.
Once that salary structure is established, then you can establish a policy to make it through those steps.
And I think, to our point, there is no structure today.
Right. We don't have, we have whatever's budgeted for the position or each individual position within each department's budget.
That's, that's a mark, that is. Any other comments?
Any other comments?
We actually, we actually do have the step increases in our, the commission. We agreed to several years ago.
Does that make it, is it an issue for you and your people? Cause just, you know what's going to happen, so.
Yeah, we have, we have some that are, the only thing I don't like about it is we have some that are one and two years and we have some that are two and four years. But we do have, we have two step increases.
I never heard the problem from the sheriff's officer about these. I knew. Anybody else want to comment?
I was, I'm, I've been here long enough that I went through that, uh, survey and we used Ray and Associates at that time. And, um, one of the things that came up that was a real, uh, issue with a lot of departments was going out and getting, um, salaries from different counties that supposedly they're the same size as we are or whatever. But the problem was is they were very different in what they handled and how many cases they had and, um, what departments they had. They may have, um, they may be county wise, personnel, I mean, uh, the people who live in the county may be approximately the same, but their county is totally different. But as an example, for in Mike's case, look at how many buildings we have to take care of. And other counties may, they may have as many people, but they may only have one building or two buildings. So it makes a whole lot of difference and you can't just go on what another county does or what they make. I don't, cause I, I saw that, um, discussion and it was a big one. And, um, and then also, uh, you have to think about, how has our county, um, grown in, like new technologies? Do we want to discount that? Or do we want to consider those people who have, um, the education and have the knowledge goes with that and pay somewhat accordingly to what the rest of the world, um, pays those in those positions? So I think those are some things to think about. They're a little different than, than just straight across the board. And, and they didn't look at like a base salary and then steps, when we did this and how that what happened and that. That's not around the.
I think that, uh, yeah, those are all good points, which, uh, leave me to believe that we need to, the possible committee to, to initiate this process.
So would it be fair to say, Commissioner, that we prepared for Michelle's visit in July and would give us some lead time to look at the holistic view of how the salary ranges fall today, um, by department? Or would you, you're suggesting a committee to start to evaluate?
No, I, I agree. I think we need to start prepping for Michelle's visit, but I think beyond that, uh, Mike already did and it seems to be an agreement that we've already started the process. So let, let's just get where we, pick up from where we, uh, stopped or where we, what we have already and convene a committee to discuss the issues. Because a lot of the questions that I've heard today are very pertinent, very relevant, uh, questions and critical to, to all issue. So, uh, it sounds like it would be important to be a part of this process and, uh, uh, let's just, uh, let's, let's move on. We've been talking about this for a number of years. Let's just do it. Let's just create this, this, whatever you want to, like a committee or task force or whatever. Let's just go ahead and, uh, and, and move forward with it. So that would be my suggestion. And I make motion that we would, uh, have a, a committee or, or add a committee. Okay, can I do it?
I don't believe that, or the, can, can they take action on that day?
Action on that?
I don't believe it's recorded that way.
I think they probably should, I think they probably should wait until the next.
The way it's written, it's just not written that way.
Okay, but I'll, I'll make sure we get it on the next, the next meeting. Ordinarily I might say, uh, you know, I've been worried about it, just, so. And I, you know, I don't know. But I think probably to be safe because the.
And what my wish was not going to be to name individuals to actually still make a committee, but to have one that would be.
Then for the next meeting, we could have an action item to, to, I mean, to, I guess, actually thank people, committee coaches.
Yeah, I, I just want to get started.
Make suggestions maybe for the committee.
Commissioner, isn't there an existing HR committee?
There is, that's.
I just don't know if this would fall under any, a committee that exists. And we don't have to decide that today. Just something that I had a thought here.
Oh, we can wait.
Item number four, I feel, no action taken, just. Item five. The budget amendments consider an act upon the approval of budget amendments for the current fiscal year.
First of all, I've got a correction on item two, side of the structure here that says, you will forms that should actually be traveled. And one and two, just reclassification of the new partners. Three is, I mean, I mean, there was no management.
Where did that grant come from here?
What's this?
Is it eighty-four hundred dollars?
Eighty-four hundred.
That's for, uh, turnouts from the Texas Forest Service. We bought, we maxed out on how much they'll pay us on it. On that, their maximum is that, is that eighty-four hundred dollars?
Are we, on that, item nine and six? Are we taking seventy-one thousand and moving it or? I thought the vote was going to be thirty-five, eighty-five.
It is. We're going to take thirty-five. We're asking to take thirty-five thousand out of the elections that have been moved to the registration.
Can we either vote on that separately after we hear, um, item eight? On the two items, five and six? Or hear item eight first?
Let's do that. Pass this for a moment. Do we want to do the rest of them? One through four? I have a motion for items one through four. I move that we accept the, uh, budget amendments, items one, two, three and four.
Second.
All in favor? Pass this five zero. And item number six. Our county projects, hear a report from various part of county projects and take any action necessary.
The, uh, report that I've given you, please stop me as I go through this and give me questions or concerns.
How did you sneak up on the agenda on the?
Item number, category number one, the Texas historic commission projects. Item number two is where we've got to change. We completed the project, all the punch list. I'll be working with Kerry's office hopefully within the next week in order to process the request of the Texas historic commission to get our supplemental funding, a refund given back to the county portion. Uh, second item, uh, the courthouse preservation phase three project outstanding. One of the items I know you'll be going into executive session on that in a few moments. The second page of your report, there is you those nine claims that are still pending right now. One item that is not mentioned out of there is warranty claim number sixty-four. This is one I've been working with a local contractor on. We have already received approval from the manufacturer to, uh, replace all the coffins, building the ceilings and hall roof levels. We've established a schedule and we'll be starting that here within the next few weeks. Substantial completion, I presume you'll discuss that in the next, in your executive meeting. The next category, the Santa Fe elevator ship project, uh, we contracted his order of the parts. We're waiting on a notification back from him on lead time. They're out of other parts and then I'll get notice out there, but one of them will start that project. The next category, elevator modernization, uh, the elevator consulting is currently working on draft design at this time. The, uh, emergency health projects on the Santa Fe building, uh, today we are starting the re-roof up on the thirteenth floor and we, once that's completed, hopefully by Friday, whether it's commuting, then we just have a few little small items being there to complete that entire building. The sheriff's administration, uh, health damage project is being completed on the roofing. Uh, we do have a finer, a few minor areas still lacking work, uh, being the EVA system and interior ceiling tile replacements. Your next page being the, uh, non-emergency projects. Items one through eight, David Harder and I are currently preparing to work with the authority group of Lubbock in order to, uh, work with them to receive the cost back to, to bring that to the commissioner's court for approval. Item number nine, I know we talked about this. I do need direction from the court if you're going to pursue that. If not, then, uh, we'll remove that from the project list. Item number 10 through nineteen, I've put on hold at this time. We're still waiting some information back. Items fifteen through nineteen from the insurance company, but just waiting to hear back, uh, from the fair and what they find out what we perceive forth through these buildings. The next category, uh, the sheriff's department correctional center waistline project, uh, we have completed it. We're waiting on a few closeout items and the final invoice from the contractor there. Still anticipating, hopefully coming in around five to six thousand dollars on what the project is, what their cost. Fire station three, uh, we present to you this morning, David does, uh, some real estate property answers. The next category being the XL Energy Retro Commissioning, uh, what reports you have right there, this is change. I worked with, uh, the Welman Group, Mr. Red Parker out of Houston the other day. We've established the guidelines and what we need to do to proceed forth from here. I've been working with Mr. Dempsey from the sheriff's department and, uh, some of my staff members were gathering the last of the information. I'll be preparing this, uh, Commissioner Mon, you were Judge Provoon at that time, and I've been thinking about this. If you don't mind, I'm going to come to you and ask you that you please sign the letter of authorization and the other required documents, once I have them all come out. And we'll present that back to XL and the company. The, uh, XL energy rebate program with efficiency energy solutions, we completed inspections on the Santa Fe District Courts, county library, downtown sheriff's administration, these were the four eligible buildings. Uh, the next item is a new project that has come up due to the concerns of some elected officials on the district courts property across the street. I've included this in my project report just to let you know that I've started some labor work and I've established a three-phase project. The first phase will be for me to evaluate the assessment on the lighting for the district courts perimeter side lighting over there to ramp the parking lot, uh, the east side of the property right there. This is first phase one is kind of a two different step project. I'll do an assessment. I will bring that information to Commissioner Kelly and then I'll be looking to bring that to the court. On what I find out, um.
Mike, can I ask you something? What is the concern that they have on the property?
I've had some issues over there with sandwiches and white kittens. The lighting over there is not, not really good. It's not, it's not.
Sure.
This happened two weeks ago. I was contacted by the judges and the people in that building. Uh, somebody went through the parking lot, slashed a bunch of tires. Uh, they also went down Sixth Street. Uh, there, there is a huge concern of who was in the parking lot, what happened over there. Uh, they're also concerned that there are several of them that work late into the evening hours or coming early. And there is no park, there is no lighting whatsoever on that, in that parking lot. Uh, and, uh, they're walking out there in the night and dark and can't see.
I discussed this with, with Mike about, you know, a lot of these construction sites at night, they have this portable lighting. And I'm just kind of wondering if maybe something like that might be an option rather than having permanent lighting in there?
I'm going to pursue both those avenues in order to bring the cost back to the commissioner's court. Option a portable lighting, uh, looking what we need to do to manage, to manage that, if that is the direction the court chooses to take. The other lighting identified as permanent, uh, what we've done is, I'm going to go back to a design that we looked at back in nineteen ninety-one to where we can put lighting on the building, but we remove it if anything, or have it still go. I'll bring both of those costs back.
I was at that catch, I just hate to see it with permanent light poles up there, cause we don't know what's going to happen.
And, uh, the lighting that I was looking to do was go back on top of the building, uh, from the top parapets, looking down on the parking lot. We had initiated that project years ago. The commissioner court at that time elected not to look for this.
Hang on now.
Y'all, we're not.
It's still a valid question, because, um, so since this is not a budgeted project, where, where are the dollar amounts?
I'm just bringing this.
You're just giving the problem, Mike?
I'm just giving the problem to you, what I've been asked to do. Uh, phase two of the project is to look at the camera situation of what could be put around the parking lot adjacent. And I was going to be working on that with Nick, uh, with the judges and whoever else at Sheriff's Department.
Maybe we could share some funds out of their budgets? Just a thought.
Then phase three, knowing what happens on phase two, I will initiate the assessment. How do we get cameras on the park? If that's the direction that they, what they look to do. So it's in the very early stages right now, just to try to get the project going, get some legwork, cause I know y'all are going to need these calls. How soon do you move forward? I have spoken to Randall Seem regarding this matter and a few of the district judges. I hope that they come to the commissioner's court and present their case to y'all as well. We're just doing the legwork to try to help get some calls.
It seems, um, just on the surface, it seems pretty extreme in terms of what we're looking at for a particular incident that wasn't unique to Potter County. It sounds like it occurred at other locations. So, um, interesting.
Thank you. Hang on a second. Item number six, no action taken. Item number seven, resolution JAG grant program is considered an act upon a resolution authorized in Sheriff Commissar to act that the county represented in all matters pertaining to Potter County's participation in the JAG grant program.
This is the same JAG grant we bring to you each year, the justice assistance grant that is shared with us in the city. Just to help with the, that kind of stuff. It can only be used on, uh, law enforcement items.
Would you like me to totally run this report then?
It's like the last forty-five.
Really?
Sheriff, what are some of the things that we purchased from this grant? I think of the Felicity Fest or.
Anything I'm going to use would use the project area, it has to be used for law enforcement.
Ammunition types?
It's not something that I can use on the correction side. It has to run until on the inside. It has to be built, built for. The duty of addition would probably become questionable because we could have COs out there. You know, the first one we got when I first got here was six hundred thousand and our number fifty-one, so. Every little bit helps with this, especially with the best. We've also applied for another grant, uh, through the justices, uh, division as well and for best, you know, they pay half for the best. And so we've applied for that. We've also recruited the constables to that. And all they had to do was write a policy, it could be a one-line sentence that says that they have a, a, uh, policy that says they wear the vest all the time. And we only had one of them. They submitted that too. So we are running through that. As far as this grant, this is the same one that goes.
The one that submitted, is that because they didn't have the, uh, equipment or the rest of it did, or is that?
I've given it to them. So one lines and it's like.
Obviously they didn't need it or.
They may have already have applied.
And I think we approved one or two during the budget session. We tried to remember.
They didn't have like these, that may be.
I'll make most of it.
We approved the resolution authorizing Sheriff Thomas to act as county representative. In the JAG grant.
Thank you.
All in favor, passes five zero. Okay, item number eight, to consider and act upon the purchase of DocuWare. DocuWare scanner and server license in order to change the paper system in the voter registration to electronic storage and file retrieval, retrieval system. A DocuWare is purchased from the Toshiba Business Solutions from DIR Contractor DIR- SDD, sounds like a disease, one four four zero, to transfer funds within the 236 election budget to 237 voter registration budget as per requirements of the auditor. Total transfer of $35,885.48.
Good morning.
Excuse my comment.
We're asking to move some money from one fund that we were already vested for to another for the purpose of changing to an electronic system. We're currently on a SHUT system, which is little envelopes that contain each individual voter's information. So if someone registered to vote in 1940, we have their registration in this envelope from 1940 along with every time they change their name, or change their address, or anything else. And those are all in my office in our office, which would be over 51,000. Right now, we have 53,300 registered voters. So what we would like to be able to do is scan those documents so we can access them electronically and make our changes and keep everything electronically. I don't believe it was done in, in 2004. The state legislature made it legal for us to change this to an electronic system. At that time, it wasn't done, it wasn't done at this point, most likely because we were waiting for a roadmap. Other counties that had done this, a system that they worked to kings out. And we believe we found that with DocuWare. So what we're asking for today is to move some funds over within my budget for the purchase.
I think that, Sheriff, I applaud the man for, for your work. Bring us into the 21st century. We've been having this sort of old king system for quite some time. And it's just amazing how, I don't know whether it worked in that, that process of hard copies, the paper envelopes. They went there and just visualized, saw what they were doing, and it's amazing. I'm watching my memory back in the Andy Griffith 45 days.
Please, why don't you use that system until I retire and finally went to get rid of those shucks? How long do you get before you approve this? How long do you think it'll take to get rid of all those shucks?
That is the question of the hour. And we, we're hoping to be able to get the system in place where we can begin in June. And since summer's such a slow time, we'll be all hands on deck.
And we'd be looking at hiring extra people then?
It's possible, but what we want to try to do is see how far we can get. And if we had to put on a temporary, I'd like to actually delay that until January so I could potentially throw that under another Chapter 19.
Okay.
Cycle in order to be able to use as much of Chapter 19 for this as would be possible. There is a potential, you're, you're never supposed to vote on a change knowing that Chapter 19 will pay off. But we have, we're estimating approximately 20,000 of this $35,000 that potentially could be reimbursed through the state for Chapter 19.
Carrie, can you explain the transfers from the fund balance? It looks like there's two line items trans, from fund balance, one in the amount of 35, well, quote, $35,885. Can you explain where that money's coming from?
Well, it's two separate funds. We have Fund 236, which is our elections fund. And that's where the funds currently reside. And we need to move them to voter registration, which is Fund 237.
And the 236, the elections fund, that's a fund balance?
Their actual fund balance right now is 372,159, and we need to put that portion out of the legal.
And what was the intent of that money kind of allocated, if you will, with the 200, the original 372,959?
Back when the health emergency program was first being implemented, we had not done with this, and we had to use to help purchase the required equipment. So the Commissioner's Court at that time put about $500,000 into the election code to purchase the equipment. It gets a little funding, so if we're going to ask you.
And then won't there, if the allocation takes place, that it will still be 336,000? David, I have a question in terms of the bid. Since we have a vendor that we're already suggesting, what is the bid process?
Yeah, we're, we're ready to move into buy off that DIR contractors, which is the state Texas contractor. They've already bid these services out. So we're, we're riding on the back of their contract that they've already put in place, which is, which is a legal way to purchase something. It's just like we did with Time Park Plus. It's the same thing, they bought that DIR contractor. So I, you know, the, the company, they, they do, they have the same system for Southwest Airlines. They, they, it's Toshiba, so they've got some really big clients. So I think it's soft, it's, it's scalable as well. Randall County uses it for their elections for the exact same purpose, which is kind of how we come up. And I, you know, not that we can do it right away, but it's, it's a document management system. It's not, it, it will be built specifically, specifically for a man at this point. It is scalable, though, that other departments could use it at some other time. We, we would have to buy more licenses because it's concurrent user license. So how many people are logged in? And that's, that's the licenses we're paying for. But there are other departments in the future could take advantage of it.
For contracting, possibly?
Possibly.
It's a very modular system, so we're buying the modules that we need. But there's other modules that other people might be interested in.
Now, what's the yearly maintenance to maintain this?
Approximately $3,100 and something dollars.
Okay.
And that is fixed for five years. And then we put it in there that they can increase about more than three percent.
$3,000, one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Early questions? And we have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Sir.
I have a second. Commissioner Bond, all in favor? Passes five zero.
And then Commissioner, if you want to go back to the budget amendment? I believe that motion. Back to item number five and budget amendments. I make a motion that we approve the Fund 236 allocation and Fund 237 allocation as presented to the court.
All right, item number nine, the Sheri Land Utilities Donation. Consider and act upon the donation from Sheri Land Utilities. Commissioner.
Let me introduce Sherri Conca again. Sherri is with the Sheri Land Utilities. Pleased to have you here, and thank you for your donation. Last time we accepted the donation of $5,000, and we agreed that we would talk about how to use that. So I think some of the suggestions that were already laid out there are all excellent and understanding also. They don't have to be all under dedicated one entity. So I might want to revisit those, those targeted suggestions of, to reduce those funds.
One of the suggestions I had was the Voltaire Fire Department for turnout here. Another one that I had was the Sheriff's Department's Citizens Academy to help with the meals and things like that. And the third thing I talked about, I have not gotten any information back from the city, was the cost for our citizens to live outside the, the city have to pay $18 a year to feed or to use the city hivers. But I haven't gotten any information back of that cost system. So I'm going to pull back a bit there. So those are the two suggestions.
I think you have one.
I'd like to see this maybe help the kids that need to get into the 4H programs. I think it's just like 25 bucks a year is all the cost for them to get into those programs. I'd like to maybe put some aside some budget for that purpose.
And I also suggested the Employee Appreciation Committee as a potential option.
How much are we looking at again?
How much do we already give extension for that registration or stoppages? And I might just, just say, I don't think we've used all those, those money as we've given in the past. And the other thing, you know, we started last, what, spring or summer, and you got preview in any program and any person or any youth that she gets in are free, so we don't have to pay her. So I don't know how much we leave all right there.
How much have we used a year?
This was our first year, I know there were a couple of them this year. They used $48,000 this year.
Looks like there would be a need to add to that, so I would probably.
What would it look like if we did something like 2,500 for the Voltaire Fire, 2,000 for the Sheriff's, Citizens Academy, and 500 for employee.
I think it would be welcome, Commissioner, since you received the donation. I'm certainly taking your lead on the recognition, you presenting on behalf of the court.
I hate to turn down money. And I can't believe I'm standing up here, but on our Citizens Academy, our meals that we do each week are donated to us. The only one we would use that really for is our end-of-year graduation that we have. And that's usually right around the $1,000 that we end up spending. So I would be, you know, I mean, I know, I don't know if to carry over or whatever, but I would be willing to donate back to that, or let's all have that $1,000 to do something else. I'm not, I think the employee deal that you guys do is tremendous. And I think that's a, that's such a good deal that has been countywide. I would just, I would prefer that go to that if that's okay with y'all. I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't want to turn away money, but that's just one, a one-time fee that we have every year. The other 12 weeks are always donated. We even have citizens that have been through our academy that bring food, that just want to cook for us. So anyway, I just want to throw that out.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate that. And we're glad they accept us on behalf of the employees.
How much does each of those turnout suit's cost yet?
Our structural turnouts are running about $2,500 a set. Our wildland sets are running about $1,000 total.
What are we going to do?
Why don't we, why don't we give them additional 500, give us the other 500? I absolutely appreciate it. $1,000 for the appreciation dinner, $3,000 to the Voltaire Fire Department.
motion.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will second that. Thank you, Judge. You're so quiet over there.
So it's three, one.
And one.
And one, okay. Okay, good.
All in favor?
And thank you for the donation. Thank you for the donation.
And it should be named after Sherri.
Thank you.
All right, now, item number 10, the Commissioner's Court meeting scheduled for Monday of the holiday. Without policy stating that in the event of a regular scheduled meeting, the court falls on a holiday, the meeting will be postponed to the next business day effective with the meeting of May 26, 2014, or to take any action, action as necessary.
This is something we need to, to take into. That, though, the way since passed, and I just thought the easiest, since the question didn't come up about it, I just thought the easiest way to do it was just kind of recognize what really kind of become tradition anyway is that, that when the meeting falls on Monday, we'll set it on next business day. And that way, I don't think that's formal policy stated anywhere. But that'll, that'll make care of it, that would be clear.
Well, I like when, I like when Christmas falls on Tuesday, you know, we have an issue there.
And it will this year, it will, well, no, I'm sorry, the 22nd, hoping.
Well, that's why I say the next business.
What I'm asking, okay, so, I want to cover the.
Yeah, this generally only happens during Christmas holidays and then right around.
So if Christmas falls on a Monday, we're going to have the meeting Tuesday, is that what you're saying?
Or depending on, actually, it would be Wednesday, I think.
It'd be Wednesday.
But we would have Tuesday off, but whatever the next business day is after that, that meeting day schedule would be is when we would have.
Wouldn't it be just appropriate to monitor that as time allows, let's make the change?
You can do whatever you want. I just, I just thought of a simple policy that you wouldn't have to worry about.
Wouldn't be simple, trust me. It's had a few stuff with it running away.
See, in, in the legal world, when we have a, when we, when, when an event, a due date occurs on holiday, that's what we do is we say, you know, there's a rule that says the next business day is when you turn something in and that business, you know, the due date happens to fall on a weekend or a holiday. So I'm just kind of, I kind of stole that. But if you want to deal with a case by case basis, that's fine with me.
I think the challenge is who's monitoring that schedule and the date of the way the courts fall.
Well, okay.
You're, you're assuming that we could follow it.
I'll play the defense advocate.
And I'm, I guess I'm speaking in terms of placement on the agenda, not who is aware with board is in session.
There's nothing to monitor. I mean, if I, if I look at and see that the Christmas day is our Commissioner's Court meeting, then the next business day is when the meeting is. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, I'm going to hate to show up here on Tuesday. That's after Christmas on Monday.
Now, having said that, there's nothing that prevents you from meeting. You can keep it on Monday if Monday is Christmas if you want to. I mean, it's whatever the court wants.
So, 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 so what, what is the issue with the dog? I guess, when you say monitor, what, how are you?
Sure, I put in a request in late March, possibly early April, indicating that I recognized that the court would fall on holiday. So I just took that upon my own personal interest to inform the judge's office and say, you might put an agenda item on just for the sake of everybody's schedule so that we know well in advance. So I did that on behalf of the court and just initiating that question. That did not happen, and it really parallels with an issue Commissioner Kelly had in terms of this agenda item. So then I followed up and said, I think this failed to get on the agenda. And again, I'm trying to be mindful of everyone's schedule. And so now it is on the agenda, and it's now the next court, and it's fine. But I think that's my kind of question behind the scenes is who is monitoring the upcoming schedule? And I just asked the question on behalf of the court because I have been noticed as they would fall on a holiday.
Person hasn't had a business that really did policy change. To me, it's clear that it's the next business. To me, it's clear. It's the next business.
And I think being an attorney, that's okay also. It sounds like there would be, if there would be arguments about entity or office that would monitor it, it would be the judge's office, and it would be the.
And that's not happening in this situation, Commissioner, which is why it's on the agenda now for the next court.
And again, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be true like that. I just thought, I was trying to make sure that problem didn't happen. So as an agenda, as an agenda.
Okay, so where are we?
Commissioner.
I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt the policy stating that in the event a regularly scheduled meeting, if the court falls on a holiday, the meeting will be postponed to the next business day, effective with the meeting of May twenty-six, two thousand fourteen. You have a second? Do you have a second? All in favor? I'll vote. Passes three, two.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eleven, mutual aid agreement. National Park Service consider an act upon proving an agreement between the National Park Service and Potter County for mutual aid verifying assistance. So much needs this weekend.
How timely.
Is he making a position of this?
No.
I think it's implied. It occurred yesterday.
This agreement basically says that if the Park Service needs us to come help them with any situation, we will go and help them. And if we need them to come and help us, they'll come and help us. It's what's been going on for years. They're just getting it very formalized.
Okay, well, it's no question this is a much-needed agreement. I don't know if he on this, if the commissioners are in this room going to be against this.
The only question that, the only question that I have is how does this fall in line with the mutual aid agreement that Kevin Starbuck came and spoke to the court in terms of keeping track of how many hours a respective county provided support?
That?
The federal allocation for the FEMA funds is how I understand it. I just don't know how this kind of marries into that bigger document.
That always gets to be a mess. The mutual aid agreement that Kevin brought to us would pertain to all of the counties, and this pertains specifically to the National Park Service.
Okay.
So this is just with the National Park Service. It doesn't include other agencies of the United States Department of Interior, such as BLM. I approve the mutual aid agreement with the National Park Service.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, all in favor. Passes five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, the tax increment reinvestment zone. Tier's number one, Potter County Board of Representatives. Consider an act upon pointing Potter County representatives to vacancies on the tier number one board of directors. The other is something that we've been, have been doing quite some time.
Many positions.
Three positions are open. I'm open to suggestions. I have my own. But the rest of the commission, please feel free to give us a representation.
I had suggested Nick Ward sometime ago, a couple sessions ago. And then in terms of nominations that we received, I think Malin had suggested Gary Elliott as well. So I just want to make it public in terms of everything that I have.
And I also mentioned the name of Janie Singleton. Janie's been a committee leader for quite a number of years. And I think also that this board needs to have a representative, not that it has to, but somebody from the commission. And one of the commissioners has let, known to me that he would be willing to serve.
And that is?
Commissioner Vaughn. I'm sorry. Commissioner Church.
And I think that's fine. Does it make preclude having more than one elected official on the board?
No, not really.
I think what makes this board unique is that it's striving to have the citizen involvement. So I think it does get a little weighted, and again, just from my perspective, if you have.
I think that I had presumed this individual name sometime a couple of years ago, and it's Judge Jones, I'm pretty sure, forward. So not only because of elected official, but also a minute's involvement in community affairs. So I thought, I think it would be good to try to get a demographic from every quadrant of the community. So I represent Judge Jones as a request to be on the tourist board as well.
I'd like to put Kevin Nelson's name in nomination. He's an attorney. His specialty is oil and gas law, real estate, and business transactions. He owns the Amarillo building on the corner of Polk and Third. Does live here in Potter County.
And let me throw this out as to you, Commissioner Kelly. Of course, I started on the initial tour board. But what value added is, does that only one of those positions on the tourist board itself as far as information that could be brought back to this court, this county, individual, prior to that those decisions already have been made? I'm trying to clarify a couple of those points.
It's a tough thing to answer because we really don't know what's going to happen until it happens. You know, you can get, we can give you an agenda. I mean, you get an agenda to see when the act is going to be taking place for that particular reason. But, you know, you really don't know what happens until after it happens.
So those decisions principally made on the tourist board? Out of that, bringing back to the court not only the county but also the city? Or is there another committee evolution there that those decisions are sized and?
There's other committees and other branches of the committee that are involved in that that have, you know, suggested, but the final decision is made by the court.
So that would be those two signal that position.
Right.
Well, and Commissioner, to your question, the way that I understand the tiers agreement, because I read that in some detail coming on to the court, is that the tiers board would make the decision. It would then be funneled through the commission for feedback and kind of a nod or discussion, if you will. And then it would go to the city commission for the vote. That is traditionally not what happens, quite honestly, Commissioner. It often goes to the city vote, and we're made aware either by the agenda or public media communication is what's happened frequently. And I've sat in on those tiers meeting just from a public perspective, from open meetings. And the perception is, you know, there's a little discussion, but there are some things certainly that is, there are some ones, some entities, and maybe it is these other boards that exist, that is making a recommendation, probably is the best word to use, making a recommendation to the tiers board who then votes on it. So my interest is in who it is making that recommendation, so that Potter County is certainly aligned with what's happening. We are the biggest investor.
So is it, so I guess I'm trying to, is there another committee that we may need to find out, be a part of prior to, and of course, I'm weighing heavily upon you, Commissioner Kelly, is that?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, there are other committees, but we don't serve on those other committees. We don't have a rep for those other committees.
So when the tourist votes, is it pretty much a done deal already? I mean, as a recommendation is brought to the tiers, is it fairly equal to the state that that is already?
Well, you know, I have been on that board for three years and pretty much, yeah. I have to say.
Thank you for saying that.
I'm going to be honest with you.
So what is the value addendance of it and the value in comparison to you? We're taking notes and bringing back?
I mean, if there's objection, there has been some. There has been some. But basically, if you want to use rubber stamp, probably is not a bad, or I mean, but basically, the decisions that I think are being made are pretty much, they're good decisions that are going to benefit downtown in that particular tiers area. I mean, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, there's going to be people that think opposite of that. The part, the time that I've been on there, I think we have made some good decisions.
And that certainly is part of my concern, Commissioner Vaughn, and certainly not in reference to who we appoint to sit on the tiers board. I think each one of these candidates would be exceptional. Potter County would really be blessed to have any of them, quite honestly. But from my perspective, Potter County is the biggest taxi entity, kind of upping the ante, if you will. We are paying the most in the fund, and we have the least to say. Whether we like it or not, that is currently what's happening. And so by the time it gets presented to the tiers board, it does appear that the decision has been made, and Potter County is really secondary to that. And I think it's up to this commission to take that charge.
If that is indeed the case, then we need to get people down on this board. And so.
Well, I agree, but my question remains, regardless of whether who the court cases or the people are very proactive going forward, if it's just a matter of nodding agreement that it's already been decided? Or do you have some decisive discussion, debate prior to that decision moving forward?
The debate can take place at the beginning, you know. You can certainly voice your opinion or your objection or whatever you want there to be. I don't want us telling you. I mean, it's certainly available if you do.
And Commissioner, maybe the question should be asked to the city and the city manager and the mayor or combination thereof, if it is a concern. And it's certainly a concern that I have, and I'd be willing to join that meeting with Commissioner Kelly or whomever would like to go, another commission. But it is a valid question.
My concern, my suggestion of the agreement still stands.
We've got one, two, three, four, five, six people. I would make my recommendation that Commissioner Church serve on that, and Nick Ward serve on it, and Judge Jones. My third selections. Anybody else have something different that they want to?
I would like to see at least one community person.
Well, Nick Ward's a community person. He works for the county. I think he is, I think he'd be a good representative.
I think able to represent as far as the skill sets and represent.
I disagree.
Well, you know, Mr. Nelson has property in downtown. I think he'd be certainly influenced about his property. He said he was in third vote. I mean, that's right there.
Those are, those are people in fact, events.
That's all, Commissioner.
Anybody else have any recommendations? Judge? I'm sorry.
Is there a particular individual or position that you have some disagreement with, Judge? Or one you would prefer to be on there other than the ones that are listed?
Nick? No.
You're not supporting Nick?
No.
Is there a reason why, Judge?
I don't know.
Who would you support, Judge? Do you want?
Judge Jones, Kevin Nelson, Janie. Who was the other name?
Gary Elliott. Janie Singleton, Gary Elliott, Commissioner Church, Judge Jones, Nick Ward, and Kevin Nelson.
I don't know. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, take these individuals one at a time. We'll work on that one at a time.
I'll start with Commissioner Church. All in favor? Serve on the tiers board. Three to one, one.
You're stating on assuming Commissioner Church.
Yes. All right, Leon will serve on that committee. Nick Ward, all in favor? That's three, two. Consider an act upon pointing Potter County.
You want each one of the big leagues out?
Okay.
These are, you're trying to get through. Making those informal motions, okay? We need to start. All right, I'm going to start over. The first one was Leon Church. I'll make a motion that we appoint Leon to that tiers board.
Second.
And second, all in favor? Passes three, four, or one extension.
I'm sorry, there's still three, one.
Three, one, one.
Would you like us to take the vote again, too, to see that?
All is in favor? Three. One extension.
One, which Commissioner Church. One name.
Okay, the second one was the appointment of Nick Ward. I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
The motion approved and the second, all in favor? That passes three, two.
Is it two no or two abstain?
Two no. All right, and then the third, we'll take Judge Jones. I'll make a motion that we approve Judge Jones at the tiers court. Has he, has he said that he could do this?
Initially, he did. I hadn't said his name, but I did a little.
Okay.
I'll say.
I have a motion that's second, all in favor? Passes three, two. We have our representatives for the tiers board.
How long is their term, Commissioner? Is it two, four years, or three?
I think it's two years. Actually, it's been, it's four years. I've been on four years.
The recycling.
Yeah, two days.
Okay, taken care of. Item number thirteen, the provision on outdoor burning. Consider an act upon renewing the burn ban for additional ninety days.
The conditions of the county are horrible in the area. None of our weather forecasts are really, not that I'm seeing the same relief in the current weather situation, okay? The last thing about these is if we do get really significant rain going, which would be several, quite a bit of rain over several days, that it can be rescinded.
I don't think it has much objection out there in the county.
I don't think it would be an objection.
Dave, the only question I have is how does this parallel, and maybe this is the next court, for any of the aerial fireworks? And speaking of, as we know, enter the summer season, I've had a couple firework vendors call to see what they can order and how that will work.
We've got, I think we've got to get closer to the fireworks sales season before we make that decision. Because, I mean, for the practical reasons that we've got, you know, drought index has got to be a certain level.
Sure.
We may be there. We may be there now. I didn't check drought index today, but it's certainly not going to get any better. But I think maybe if I, the next meeting, we probably should start thinking about that.
Because at least I know in terms of a public, they're asking questions of what they can order for the season. So I'm sure you guys have gotten those calls already.
Well, let's check, Pat, at the next meeting, let's see drought index. I'll put an item on the agenda. We can at least give a warning that we're going to impose. The drought index is bad enough. We need to still improve and probably impose it. And may, may make a way to do it at the time. I think, I think we have to have that in place by June fifteenth, if I remember correctly.
Seems like that.
Something like that.
I don't think getting this related directly. I haven't looked at drought index either. We get a chart that's the energy release components, and those are at ninety, at the ninety-seven percentile right now, which is very extreme.
I make a motion that we approve renewing the burn ban for an additional ninety days effective May twelfth, twenty-fourteen, expiring August tenth, twenty-fourteen.
Sir.
Motion to approve the second. Motion to approve the second, all of them in favor.
Hey, Pat, what is the appropriate percentile as far as that energy that you spoke of indicated drought ninety, what's seventy percent?
Um, the two big numbers that they look at on it, I believe it's ninety. I have to look again. There's two rides that they put across it and by looking at historical data, they know that when the, when the fuels are in that condition, that we're very subject to very large fires and we're right up at the very top of it.
So the higher percentile, the more.
The worse condition, or the, yes, worse condition. I've got them on my phone and my email.
Kind of on the same subject, we need to be on the lookout because it appears the fireworks lobby wants to take this decision of whether or not to ban fireworks away from the counties. Like to give to the states. Why's that dig?
I don't think the state will, they won't throw it at the county. Yeah.
The state has so many variations, you know, what's, what's happening in these things.
Yeah.
We have to keep it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Commissioner, when y'all are, if the state does that, if they're going to do it anyway, if at least y'all can influence to make it a regional, somehow broken down by regional areas at least.
Regional districts.
Item fourteen, tax abatement guidelines and criteria. Consider an act upon renewing the county's guidelines or criteria for tax abatement agreements and the application for tax abatement and to take any action necessary.
How did this get on the question?
Well, and I'll tell you what happened. I got a call from the AEDC a week and a half ago and evidently they had some project in pipeline that they're, they're bringing to you guys and they said they either, I didn't understand, they either have or are going to talk to each of you individually about it. And so what, what, in order for us to, now, depending on where it is, what it is, we might be able to just go along with the cities, hang on, cities guidelines, but we, we need to adopt our own guidelines for our own projects. And those expire, and those expired are ourselves. So I'm, I'm just setting up the, kind of setting the stage, but I, I think more information is coming from AEDC about the other projects they have.
So, so something is on the horizon, I guess, for them to explain this stuff.
Exactly, exactly. And so I, I've done, I, I just took our, first I just did our, took our, the ones that expired in March and, and just kind of changed dates, basically. And then the more I looked at them, it was late in the day, Friday, the more I thought they were, they were really more complicated than we needed to be. Because I think we, I borrowed them from different sources the last time we adopted them, which was a bit about two and a half years ago. And so I just went through them again and did a more simplified version, which I think I, and all I did was take out some of the language that was repetitive and just some of the technical definitions and stuff like that, because it's all laid out in statute and tax code anyway. And, and just, just put those a little book in front of you for your consideration. You really don't, I mean, you can consider them now and pass them. I mean, by doing this, you're just telling people a tax abatement, who request one, this is what we have to do. These are the minimum guidelines for tax abatement.
So to that point, Judge, you know, considering the last agreement or contract you had, is there any language difference between the last or the previous one you had to this one that's before us now?
No.
Something that's.
We added some things about, one, some of the particular items that we put in about the person needing to the abatement has to have a certain percentage of our employees, a certain type of benefits. We, I had left those attached. You want to change those, you're certainly welcome to do that.
So there was no presentation towards AEDC, no, it was different language.
Yes, going back to AEDC source, it might want to just follow the cities. And I look at the cities and they're really, I mean, they're, they're there. I mean, they're, they're very simple, about two pages.
Well, what I can say, go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I don't want to follow the cities for sure, because what affects the city is sheer indifference of what affects the county. Whenever we give a tax abatement, in my opinion, that we certainly, an abatement benefits the company who is asking for it. Well, how does it benefit the county? And so it has, somewhere we have to have a two-way street here. And by putting in a percentage of the employees have to be in the county, I think that's good, but I'm not sure it's high enough. And the other thing that was brought to our attention at the judges and commissioners meeting in San Angelo was consider the higher paid employees like the executives and requiring some percentage of those having to live in the county. Because they're the ones that are going to buy the higher priced homes. They're the ones that are going to have the higher taxes and that's what's going to, you know, offset some of the tax abatement that we did. And I don't know if we want to go that far. I think it's something we should consider at some point, but.
And not only the, the executives, but I think that even for those, the labor of the skill sets, those individuals that actually have those particular skill sets. If we are not identifiable, then why not maybe try to have some type of training? They see, they could teach to, to be in those positions to be hired at those particular levels.
I like the idea where requesting that they have to have, often their people's health benefits. There's some really good things in here.
Commissioner, I reviewed the previous standards, criteria for the abatements, the ones that expired in March, and compared them with the revised document that's prepared for the court's approval today. And I roughly found about twenty-three changes to the language. There's three, Dave, that I have a pretty strong opinion that I think should be included in the doc, in the new document that are currently not. And I'm not sure how you want to do this, because I'm referring to an old document that they call on. And I can give you my notes as a follow-up. So you're certainly welcome to what I jot down here, but on page three of the new document, the previous one called for what was then called C, of new and existing facilities. And there was language about abatement may be granted for new facilities or improvement to existing facilities.
Where are you from?
This is on the original document and I'm not sure that both were included in the packet.
They should have, they should have gotten copies, everybody should have gotten copies.
Of both. So this is the first one, but page three, that language is missing from the new one. And I do think that should be included.
And that, that is an instance of either duplication or, I mean, we can certainly add it back in, but that's either duplication or covered in statute. But I mean, you're absolutely right, that is, needs to be part of your requirements.
Yeah, and I saw that being the case, Dave, for several of the other changes. It was buried into the other language and so I, I'm, I'm following you with that strategy, but there was that that was left out. And then on, I think it was still on page three, ineligible property, that's how you had it spelled out. You kind of lumped some of them together of aircraft and land, inventory supplies, et cetera. One was left out and, and I'm not sure if it needs to be included, but I will certainly want to mention it. Any property included in the calculation of the base year value as defined. And I'm going to lean on Cherry, because I know that you calculate those base value years for our property. Do you do that? You work with Jim Childers at the appraisal district to do that?
We rely on Jim to.
To do all that. Just a side note, and I'll give you these, just so you have them. And then one, final one that I saw was missing and it's on the la, I think it's the last page, second to last page of the new document, administration. It speaks to really similar language, but it doesn't define who is doing the work of establishing the thresholds. And the previous document speaks to the chief administrator of the county shall annually determine an assessment of real and personal property comprised in the zone.
Chief appraiser.
It currently reads, the chief appraiser of the county. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you for the correction. That's how it currently reads. So I'm, I'm not sure if there's value in us, you know, having some time for the court and maybe you gentlemen have reviewed the previous documents, look at the existing, or even if there's a document, Dave, that you can redline and track any of your changes. So the court has.
Sure, I can do that.
I'm not sure what's the best strategy.
Better be like, I'll be happy to do whatever. As I say, that came to me late, too late today, to do a combination.
And I agree, it's cleaner to read, it's easier to follow, so I definitely understand the strategy.
Do we want to take any action at this time? Or just pass this and put it in the next other class?
And AEDC would prefer that we do it today, but I told them, I can't guarantee that. I mean, I, and I, in fact, told them, knowing the court like I do, I expect they're going to want some time to kind of digest with what I give them on Monday and I expect they'll head final action when they say. And so that'll be, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, appointment, consider an act upon following the form items. I think you all want to answer, or do you want to? All the ones, okay. Road and Bridge, employment of Dakota Ratliff from part-time to full-time, seasonal maintenance tech effective May fifth, twenty fourteen. Item B, Road and Bridge, the appointment of Roy Sandy Burcom, seasonal road tech effective May fifth, twenty fourteen. Item C, Road and Bridge, the appointment of Justin Shapler, Shapler. Pronounce that one.
Roger.
You have to be careful. I did.
We're going to go with Shap. Season road maintenance tech effective May fifth, twenty fourteen. Item D, Road and Bridge, the appointment of Felipe Martinez Jr., summer mower effective May fifth, twenty fourteen. Item E, the appointment of Gary Johnson, summer mower effective twenty fourteen, uh, May fifth, twenty fourteen. And last item, the Road and Bridge, termination of Stephen Morris, maintenance tech effective April twenty eighth, twenty fourteen. Have a motion to approve all these. I'll make the motion again.
Second for discussion, just a quick question, Roger, on Dakota Ratliff, transferring from part-time to full-time. I'm assuming there was a full-time position open?
You are correct.
And is that one that's been open for some time?
Well, no, he just retired here about two, three weeks ago.
Okay.
Okay, please.
Who was answering?
If on our list of appointed items was.
Yes, Steve Morris. All right, we have a motion to second, all in favor. Pass this by you. Let's go, skip to item twenty, jail count. Here we report on Potter County, the judge center, taking any action necessary. Give you the jail count is five out of ten, nine, one of those repeat.
Any of Childress, sure.
None of Childress, okay. Keep those counts in. Okay, back to item sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Executive session of real property. Request to sell county property to hold an executive session, deliberate purchase, exchange or value of real property where deliberation opened, meaning would have detrimental effect on the position of the county in negotiation with a third party pursuant to section five, five, one, dot, point zero, seven, two, Texas government code, take any action necessary appropriate after the executive session. Item seventeen, executive session of real property, fire station number three, to hold an executive session, deliberate purchase, exchange or value of real property where deliberation is in open meetings would have detrimental effect on the position of the county in negotiation with a third party pursuant to five, five, one, point zero, seven, two, Texas government code, take any action, be, take any action appropriate after the effective session. Item eighteen, executive session consultation with attorney, to hold an executive session, consult with the county attorney regarding the warranty claims during construction on Potter County courthouse project pursuant to Texas government code number five, five, one, point zero, seven, one, allowing a government body to conduct a private consultation with the attorney about pending or complicated litigation. Be, take any action after the session, after the executive session. We will close and it is now ten forty-four and we'll come back in the session after the executive session. Okay. Okay, the executive session has completed, we're back in session at ten eleven fifteen. And it should be noted that this time, there was no action taken on item sixteen, seventeen or eighteen. Anything further that could be brought to court?
I think we have one item, county insurance items.
Okay, county insurance items, we have any?
Oh, nothing new for us.
We have any items to be added to the next business court?
The ones that we've already noted.
No additional? Any further comments? We are adjourned at ten sixteen. I'm sorry, eleven sixteen.
Wish.
Excuse me. Seriously, excuse.
You didn't look at us, so I knew.
Excuse me.